I'm in the city far along Gay Hard Lane and nobody is, uh, here to question it so, uh, at this time I'd like everybody here for the special court meeting and before we get started I ask everybody to stand and all of them work prayer and then we do, uh, pray the way. Dear heavenly Father, again, we just, uh, thank you enough, dear Lord. Thank you just for another day of life, dear Lord, and just thank you for a beautiful day, dear Lord. And we just, uh, pray that you just be with your county, dear Lord, and just help the people that's devastated and hurting so bad, dear Lord. We just pray that you just comfort them as long as you can. Dear Lord, just, uh, help us to, uh, make decisions pleasing to you but also with best for the county, dear Lord. And we never fail to give you praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pray to the witness to the light of the United States of America and to your beloved for which your standing one nation under God and the basis for the liberty and justice of our land.
Okay, and this time we go ahead and open the bid for FEMA forty-six sixty-three and... Put it on the table, let me go on. Uh, come up here and look at Craig, a man, I got one sheet got a blank on it and I've got another package here. Make sure, make sure this one is not... Can't see nothing right now.
What is it?
You know how many papers you put in? Did you just bid on four, uh, four bridges, Art?
Yes.
Hey, Willie, I got one here that says new project with a cliff. Is that the one you're bidding on or?
I don't know. That's just the six new ones.
Oh, okay.
Six new without it. They're all the same project number.
Okay. We weren't doing the six new ones.
The six new ones that the quotes were due today? These are the quotes that are due today but are foreign to next.
Oh, okay.
You said they're not due today?
The award does not mean the award of the day. He asked for quotes, so...
Anybody up for some of those, some of these six new projects? I didn't know we didn't say anything else on this yet.
He did. He put it out two weeks ago. It's right here, sir. It's right here. Twelve fifty-one is over, that's right.
Seventy-five and a minute thirty-two.
That might be next bid, sir.
What's the number?
Ten oh one.
Yes.
That's the spec sheet. Who is that?
Ten oh ones on the first twenty-five.
Ten oh ones on the first twenty-five?
Yes.
We're missing a folder somewhere. There's a ten of the forward.
We've got ten of one but I don't think I have a lot of... Six K's.
Here it is. I found it, Judge. I found it. Yep. We have two that aren't bid on this time. We have two that aren't bid on this time, thirty-eight and, uh, ten twenty-two that have to go back out for bid. Those have to go back out for bid that weren't bid. What? This stuff?
Did I move to you?
Yeah, that.
Okay.
Ten data? That's it, yes.
So, you want to do the pleasure of reading them off?
No. No!
We're going to get somebody then.
But that's a jury today. But that's a jury today. Well, he's gonna, if you, if you read them off, he's gonna put them down on the paper.
Start right here, work my way over. How about taking the other folder?
No, just, let's all talk.
Okay, uh, we go ahead and start reading the bids off and they're going right there. You getting them, Jeremy?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The first one is project, uh, ID number is thirty-one. Uh, remember we got a couple bids on it. The first one is Coal Trucking and the total on it is thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars. The next bid on project, uh, thirty-one is forty-two thousand and a hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Second one, who's the bidder?
Oh, uh, Coal Trucking.
The first one was?
The first one was, uh, Middle Fork Contracting.
What was the price on Middle Fork?
Forty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Coal's thirty-four, is that?
Yeah, Coal Trucking was thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars. That's only two bids we got on that one, I guess. The next one is project ID number is one oh five. We just got one bid on it and it's Pit Biker and it is, uh... Oh, that's ID number. Thirteen thousand, a hundred and ninety dollars and two cents. And we'll look at others. Instead of one hundred and ninety, it's actually one hundred and fifty dollars. Thirteen thousand, a hundred and fifty dollars and two cents for Pit Biker. The next project, ID number is two seventy-eight. Uh, Middle Fork Kings, uh, Middle, King Church. Middle Fork Contracting is thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. And that is the only bid we got on that one. Uh, project ID number four twenty-nine. Uh, the first one is Pit Biker. And the total on it is ten thousand, five hundred and four dollars and fifty-six cents. The next one on, uh, project four twenty-nine is Middle Fork Contracting and it is twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. And then the next one on project four twenty-nine is... I'm not seeing who the contractor is on this one. Okay, it's Art Johnson and he bid... Art, you've got two different numbers in here. One said revised version. Is that the one that?
Last page, the other thing.
The last page, okay. Twenty-two thousand even. And the next project is, uh, four sixty-two. The first bid is Coal Trucking and it is forty-four thousand, a hundred and twenty-nine dollars. The next one is, uh, Middle Fork Contracting and it's forty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars. And then on project, uh, four ninety-four, Middle Fork Contracting is twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars.
How much?
Twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars. And then the next one is, uh, Art Johnson, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars even. Uh, project five seventeen, uh, Coal Trucking is twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars.
How much you said it was?
Twenty, twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars. Uh, the next one is Middle Fork Contracting and his bid is twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. The next project is seven fifty-nine and it is, and it's Coal Trucking, is seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. Uh, the next one is Middle Fork, uh, Contracting on that, on seven fifty-nine and it is seventy-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. The next one is project, uh, ID number of eight fifty-three. Uh, the first one is Craig Land Improvement and it's forty-five thousand, seventy-four dollars and forty-seven cents. He's not going to want bidding on that. Then the next one is, uh, project, uh, ID number one zero zero one and the first one is, uh, Pit Biker Construction and it is thirteen thousand, three hundred and nine dollars and eighty-three cents. The next project is, uh, one zero one two. And it is, uh, the first one is Pit Biker Construction and it's eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars and sixty-nine cents. And the next one on project ten twelve... Is Craig Land Improvement and it is twenty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty cents. The next one is project number ten twenty-eight. First one is Coal Trucking and is twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars. The next one is Pit Biker. It is fifteen thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-one cents. The next one is, uh, Middle Fork Contracting and it is twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. The next one is project number ten thirty-six. First bid is Coal Trucking and it is twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars. The next one is Middle Fork Contracting and it's twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars and thirty-five cents. The next one is, uh, project, uh, ten forty-five. First one is Middle Fork Contracting. The only one, I guess, forty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars even. The next one is project number ten forty-eight. The first one is Middle Fork Contracting at twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. The next one is Art Johnson, uh, twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. The next one is project number ten seventy. The first bid is Coal Trucking, uh, twenty-one thousand, eighty-nine dollars. The next one is Pit Biker Construction and it's twelve thousand, let's see, it might be a thirteen. It is thirteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty-three cents. The next one is Middle Fork Contracting at twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars and seventy-five cents. Project number ten seventy-nine is Middle Fork Contracting at thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars. Project number ten eighty-two, Coal Trucking, thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and five dollars. The next one is, uh, Middle Fork Contracting and it is thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty-five cents.
Here, Judge.
Project number ten eighty-four, Coal Trucking at thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and six dollars. Middle Fork Contracting is thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Project number ten ninety-two, Coal Trucking is thirty-nine thousand and six dollars. The next one is Middle Fork Contracting at thirty-five thousand...
What project number is that? I'm sorry. How did you... What project number, roundhouse?
Uh, ten ninety-two, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
I'm being on your city. And Combsy bid on it was thirty-nine thousand and six dollars even. And Middle Fork Contracting was thirty-five thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars. Project number eleven thirty-two, Coal Trucking is twenty-four thousand, a hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Can you repeat that, Judge?
Twenty-four thousand, a hundred and thirty-two dollars. Middle Fork Contracting is twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty-five cents. The next one is project number eleven seventy-five. Art Johnson is twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, Pit Biker, seventeen thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-six cents. The next one is Middle Fork Contracting, twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars even. Uh, the next project is twelve fifty-one. Eight thousand, a hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighty cents and that's Pit Biker.
Can you repeat that, sir?
I can. Eight thousand, a hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighty cents. Okay, wait a minute, back to your. Wait just a minute, I think we got one. Well, these are new projects there. Okay, we, we've read the bids off, and me, me and, uh, Melinda were talking the other day. Uh, I guess, are we gonna take these bids and go ahead and submit them to FEMA? And let them choose.
No.
No, just, I mean, not just, but come in here, or do we go ahead and take them?
You.
Vote on it?
You'll vote on who you want to accept the bid. The accepted bid will go to FEMA for version. Once the version's out, it'll come back, and if the contractor chooses to take the bid, then that will be the bid. If not, you can opt to select second bidder today. That way, if the first bidder decides not to take the version from FEMA, then we've got a second bidder in line. Make sense?
Well, we just take the lowest bid, reach project, and then take the second lowest bid for the.
That, that's up to you, um, I mean, the numbers are there, there are five folders. Uh, as you can see on the reports there, that there's quite a bit of difference in bids. If you wanna go ahead and award them that way today, that's your choice. Um, I will submit those to FEMA. As soon as the version is done from FEMA, and they give the okay, we'll then send out the award letter, the final award letter. But, um, I would go ahead and select first and second bidder today.
I make the motion to accept the lowest bid of each project, and opt into the second lowest bid, you know. Like, some of you only got two bids on per job, or some of you got more to, but to accept the lowest bid presented, and that the option be the second lowest bid.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, consideration and approval to, uh, award the lowest bidder the project. And if that doesn't work out, the next.
Lowest.
Lowest bid would, would get the project. And we will submit this to FEMA, this is something that we'll choose, FEMA may look at and change it. So, Donnie, Donnie, are you making a motion now, Donnie?
Yeah.
To go ahead and approve the bid to the lowest bidder, and the next one in line, if they are not able to do it, or refusing, uh, go to the next lowest bidder. Donnie made a motion, and we have a second.
Second.
Donnie Bush?
Uh.
Are we open?
No.
Sir, you have a question on the floor.
Pardon?
You have a question on the floor.
Yeah, we had a few pitches you didn't read there, and I believe this gets over as well.
Are there six bids for the new?
No, no, no.
Probably last month, five, last.
Ten twenty-two and thirty-eight, you agreed.
And then we had.
Was it?
Yeah.
Who's submitted a bid on that?
Well, Craig Land Improvement.
Ten twenty-eight and what, I'm sorry?
Project thirty-eight, project twelve fifty-nine, we have a bid, bid.
Twelve fifty-one.
Did you reach a meeting today, or was it submitted last time?
I don't have any bid for thirty-eight. For thirty-eight, for thirty-eight and ten twenty-two, there was nothing on the folders.
They won't have been that one blank when you had it, everybody. That's all the bids that, uh, I've got except these new, that Middle Fork turned in. But I got a hard reason, I had two envelopes from Craig and Land, and then, uh, I think it was pit viper. Here's Jimbo.
Our bid didn't change, do you still have one from the last meeting? We didn't read the last bid, same bid.
We didn't change our bid, we just turned in our scope of work, but some, some people, I think, changed their bid.
We were thinking we're supposed to keep our same bids from the last meeting, everybody else look at it.
Yeah, we didn't think the numbers were supposed to change. Yeah, I think, uh, most of us were on that, on staying. Same thing, same, how it's work.
Even though you got exact scope of work, your, your bid didn't change?
No.
No, we're just telling you how the work's gonna be performed, we're not changing our bid.
That's what they said the last meeting, to change the numbers, just itemize what they're gonna do.
Yeah, that's what y'all said at the last meeting, don't change our numbers, just maximize what we itemized to do.
Well, if that's the case, then part of the bids that came in today were changed.
I thought, I thought, it's like they said, I thought we was under the understanding that the bid that was submitted the other day was the numbers could not be changed, they just wanted to submit scope of work for each bid.
That's what was said.
Yeah, but when we changed the scope of work, it would have to change your price.
Yeah, and every change of scope of work, you have to change your numbers.
Oh, I think so. So, did everybody get a, did everybody get a scope on?
But you can't expose everybody's numbers, and allow somebody else to.
Scott, they said they had to itemize when they went up the first time.
Well, most of the ones I remember, that last time, they didn't have the scope of work written down on it.
Have to know what this bid.
Brandon, you wanna get in on this?
Depends on how you advertised it. Now, you guys gotta be clear with what's telling to do.
Yeah, and that was the.
The last meeting, they were told to, they were told for their bids to be accepted, they had to provide a scope of work. And everyone in that meeting told us that they could do the work that they submitted for the cost that was given. The cost that was given, Matt said, should not change. That, that was what was in the other meeting.
Yeah, I'm figuring was, was publicly then, I mean, it was read publicly.
That's correct.
It wasn't fairly, to, you know, open it back up, and let them have the numbers required. So, what, uh, at this point, you've got everybody's numbers right.
Right.
That from the last meeting, and they've all said they could do the scope of work, so should, shouldn't they be put in the grid for the adopt, be adopted meeting? Is that what you're under, well, I wouldn't know, so I don't know what's top of the list. But you have to be clear. So, what does everybody understand? What all you bidders understand?
What's that?
What, what all you bidders understand, what this meeting was for, and what was supposed to be done?
But you can't expose people's bids.
I'm not saying that, I'm saying, what did you all understand when you left the last time?
That we would not change our numbers.
Okay.
Hold up. Has I sent somebody else to speak to her this week about this? Looked at the last.
What was told when you left the meeting, so that everybody's.
We were told when they left the meeting to individual. That this is, the process is going to change, because that's what they said, that's the last meeting, you can watch the video. That what they're gonna do is accept everybody's scope of work, take an average of that scope of work, and rebid that scope of work.
That was two weeks ago.
No, that was this last meeting, that was just the other day.
Oh, that was the, that was two weeks ago, that they said, if your scope changes, write on your bid what you bid.
No, 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 hold up, guy, we pulled a video from YouTube. It's.
Well, it was, it's on there, I've been there, one of these meetings, he wasn't at the meeting that they changed it.
And then the second one I was at, and I got all twenty-five bids. Then they said that they were going to reevaluate every scope of work, because per attorney, if the check, scope of work changes, they could substitute the change order. So, it increases the pay based on that. But they changed the scope of work.
That's not what was said.
No, I'm not telling you that, that was what my attorney said, that I contacted their license.
Okay, but that's not what was said in the meeting?
Yeah, but they, can I talk? But they said that we're gonna make everybody's scope of work and average that. That's why they take the six new bids that we took today for the new projects, correct? To get an average of scope of work, then turn around and bid that scope of work based on the new average of scope of work for everybody for the new six.
Okay, let's clear it up one more time. We put the bid out, we told all contractors that, um, basically, the work could not be done for the scope of work. In that meeting, you said that you could do for what was on those project sheets. Okay? So, what I explained was, we were taking basically quotes instead of bids. We were looking at those quotes from contractors to be able to put out a competitive bid. That was what was this week, was Thursday. However, I'm not the one in that meeting that gave the caveat that the numbers couldn't change. You said you could do the scope of work for what was in there, regardless.
I don't, by my opinion, the first one was based on the first scope of work, scope of work changed. There is a revised scope of work now on the bids, it wasn't on the pre, the first one.
Correct, because we told you all originally that you needed to submit what you could do the job for, not what FEMA's scope of work was on there. There wasn't any backfill, there wasn't prices for culverts, um, there wasn't enough channel line. So, basically, we were looking at scope of works and not bids the first go-around.
Something to me, it's a new bid completely, I need to hire an engineer to go out and figure them all up.
We don't have time to do that under exigent circumstances.
I understand that, but I mean, it keeps changing every time we come in here.
So, from our perspective, let me understand, what, how, how many, how many jobs have changed from the last bid that we had?
FEMA gave a scope of work which was not a good scope of work. So, what the direction we were given from KYTC and KYM was, whatever the contractors submit as far as their quotes, that we will send the best quote to FEMA for a version of that quote and a revised scope of work. That's why the caveat's there today, that if they win the bid and don't wanna do the bid for the revised, then we'll go to the second bidder.
So, at this point, what should, I mean, what should have changed from the last time that you were here until now? So, we got several people saying they didn't change the amount of their bid. Some people, did you change the amount of your bids?
On some of them, yeah.
Okay, well then.
Because they changed the scope of work, I mean, they would do different types of pipe and OSHA bangs, so if their bidding on one thing, not on another.
But you made a statement, they were told not to, right? Okay, so what the visiting court was looking for was itemization, is that correct?
That's what we understood.
If we want to look at your scope of work, the folders I have pulled, you'll notice that even on the itemized bids, that, i.e. there's a line for backfill that aren't filled in. Um, geo textile is a hundred and sixty dollars, five tons of number two gravel is two hundred and ninety-eight dollars, and six tons of DGA is two hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Now, if we're gonna go that all the lines had to be itemized, then I would consider that an end of the bid. But that's not my choice to make, that's your all's choice. If you were, I guess my ultimate question is, is if you were to award the bids today, how would you award the bids?
And, and really, whatever we choose to do, and when it gets to FEMA, they're gonna be the one who decides.
FEMA's going to be the one that defines the final scope of work, yes, sir, that is correct.
Should we not just allow the bid that we're taking to be submitted to FEMA, and let them look at, let them, uh, identify the scope of work and, let them pick the lowest bid, I mean, the balance is out, well, then I mean, the lowest bid, but.
If they wanna do it anyway, what's, what, uh, what's, what's your, what's your guys' bid, this contractor?
Well, you got, you got the fifteenth of December as a date, that's the only date I've heard that we have to have this completed, and the, the only thing I would say is that the longer you go down the road, we're gonna have to change that date. I think you have to change it now. But if you go another week, you sure gonna have to change it, because about Thanksgiving coming up, quarries are all closed, and you can't get rock. People won't eat turkey, and it's just a bad time to get anything done. And so, I, I, my question would be, I'm just a small bidder in this deal, I, I don't know if I'll get any jobs or not, but if I get two or three jobs, I'd certainly like to complete them in the time that's allotted. And, and I, I, I like someone who has, uh, better knowledge of what FEMA wants to do, because we're kinda in this thing, Jeff, we're bidding with the court, but FEMA's out here, they're, they're the end, end result, I guess, of the money, and, and I'm kinda confused. I'm just sitting here thinking, you know.
And really, I am too, and I think they was confused, this is the first time they've ever gotten involved, and I know of everyone trying to property. But I mean, if it's emergency interest, uh, I think that'll be put in pretty quick, if it's emergency.
Well, you're gonna, you're gonna have some bad weather, I, I mean, based on, the time of year is, you're gonna have days that it rains, and creeks get up, and you can't get in, and, I mean, and then they wanna set some kind of date out here at the end, right now, the fifteenth of December, which is less than six weeks away, and, you know, we need to maybe talk about that a little bit too.
Let me clarify that. So, we were asked in one of the meetings what the date would be. At that time, we told you all that that would be a soft date, because we have to wait for the version to come back from FEMA. So, once you're given your post-award for the, you will have forty-five days from the date of your award to complete your projects that you're awarded.
They, they said they would do that.
Well, that's, that's what they established, is that they were gonna do a forty-five day.
Yeah, okay. I hadn't heard that, I heard.
Well, the la- the last bid put it at fifteenth, around fifteen.
Correct.
Now, we're a week later, so it'll probably be the twenty-second.
Yeah, okay.
If FEMA looks at that and don't make a decision until next week, once it's awarded to you, then forty-five days starts in.
Okay, all right, that, that's fine.
But the weather's just gonna make it harder on them.
Yeah, it's, it's worse all the time, yeah, yeah.
And I, and I think still, I don't know if we got, we got, uh, a motion been made, uh, but we haven't been able to vote.
Or you guys say it's about what you submitted today?
Well, we still have three of this, up there somewhere. Thirty-eight wasn't even bid it on, because we, we had bid it on.
That would've been in our package, thirty-eight, twelve fifty-one, I believe.
Are you the only one to bid on John Diddy and Ray, or did somebody else, did, did you have a bid, did you get, did you get free?
You have bid on thirty-eight?
No, but I had two listed here, no, uh, ten twenty-two and thirty-eight, I didn't hear of them. You wanna pull those, Melinda, and look at them?
Make sure you got them all.
Many might have been linked to some others.
Yeah, I have mixed up. Yeah, I have, because I was six that you all wanted to look at, so you all played another pile for those.
So, you're also saying the one that he didn't, the one that he didn't bid on today, the other ones will go in and play?
Jake A. had on, bid on.
Okay, there's not a ten twenty-two, unless it's one of the new ones. There's a ten twenty-eight. The two I don't have any bids submitted for today is thirty-eight, I'm sorry, my apologies. The ten twenty-two, I have nothing for today, and the thirty-eight, I have nothing for today.
Do you have, are there anything in there from the other day?
They had, they submitted bids before that were not itemized bids, that is correct. We have the bid amount on the front of the folder. But nothing was submitted today, itemized.
I really, I really think the best thing to do is just go ahead and submit the bids to FEMA, and let them look over, let them probably get the apples, apples, and, um. How, how, how do y'all, how do you contractors feel about that? I mean, two of us, uh, moving and choosing, let's just go ahead, in a, in a, those were decisions will be made by FEMA. Let's just go ahead and submit the bid that we got.
The ultimate scope of work will be submitted by FEMA, they will not choose the contractor. That is, that is up to the county to choose, not for us.
That's your job.
And we need to send it to them, see if they agree, that's the scope of work that ain't be done, and.
We can submit them, we can submit them.
We can call a potential meeting, and.
We can submit them to FEMA for quotes as them to be wrote.
This has been going on for three weeks, I think everybody hears about.
Yeah, and I mean, if people need their interest, I mean, I mean, they need their interest, I agree.
You know, a lot of us didn't, we took it as not to change our numbers. And, and when you expose your number, then you allow another contractor to double his numbers and still stay under you. You know, I've never been to a bid that took place, and I've been at this a lot.
Yeah, I understand the scope of work wouldn't.
We were told to take your all's new itemized list and break our old bid down to that list, that's what we were told to do. I mean, go back and play video, it's that simple.
Yeah.
You all said, well, you get new list.
I was gonna say, I think the best, so, what I'm saying, I think the best thing to do is go ahead and submit these bids to FEMA, and let them look and see if it's a scope of work, if they say it is, bring it back, and then us, that would be to say, hey, you've got this one, you've got this one, you've got.
Sir, FEMA comes back with the scope of work, you will need to revisit this.
I'm not saying that.
Okay.
I'm saying send it to FEMA, and let them look and say, yeah, they bid there, what the scope of work should have been, and if not, just mark it off, if not in the scope, I mean, they're not, not to be presented. I'm not saying change the scope of work, I'm just sending it to FEMA.
Do what?
I'm not saying change the scope of work, I'm just saying send it to FEMA.
If I send every bid to FEMA, they're going to look at them as a project, and there's no telling how long it's going to take, I think, to get these back, and I don't know that it will then be emergency work. That's why FEMA asked for quotes, and for you all to look at and select a quote, and then for us to select that and send to FEMA for a final version.
Brandon, does any of this kind of, does the whole bid process sound right?
It said, you know, you have to bid, that's the reason the bid packets are put out, okay? It's so that everybody's on a level playing field, and so that everybody knows what the terms are. And if everybody doesn't read the bid package the same, or they're not instructed the same, then it doesn't sound like a level playing field. You know, bottom line to me. So, if the, uh, you know, at this point in time, I'm saying, you got a motion to second on the floor. I don't know if you guys are gonna follow through on that or not, you've had your discussion. So you can either vote on that motion at second, or you can, you vote it up or down, and then we're left where we're left at this point, unless there's any more, uh, any more discussion of it from anybody, the judge or the magistrates.
Eric.
I've got to agree with what Melinda said, uh, I've worked with FEMA for a long time and, you all are gonna have to make a decision on who you're gonna at least recommend that you award these sites to. FEMA's not gonna make that decision for you. They may address a scope of work or something a little like that, but they will not, that's not what they did. And I, am I correct on that? They will not do that. You all are gonna have to make a decision on a site-to-site basis and award it to a contractor.
Pretty much what you just said.
Right, and I, and I'm completely agreeing with that.
I think part of the problem with the bid selection is that, A, the scope of works were shorty to begin with. So, they said this isn't competitive bidding. So we took the quotes, we over, we sat on it as a group, we looked at them, we tried to come up with the best scope of, scope of work to make the bid competitive. That's what they've submitted back their itemized statements for. But I think one of the major problems is, is that, no offense to anyone in this room, but you have contractors that are asking multiple people what's going on, and it's causing a lot of confusion. And that's not going to stop even if we set the bid out again. We're saying what's going on in open court, and clearly, it's not being followed because there are other avenues that are coming afterwards, so.
Okay, you got.
Can I ask a question?
I think I would want to do is sit here and talk about different things, a motion been put on the floor, and a second been made, to go ahead and award the bid to the lowest bidder, and if they can't do it, or don't, don't accept the project, it will go to the second one in line, so, uh.
And I have one question for you both.
Okay.
What's, because, Donnie, you made the statement that the numbers were not gonna change. What numbers are you voting on, the numbers that were presented at the last meeting, or the numbers that are voted at, being presented at this meeting?
Well, that's, that's the whole issue, because in the last meeting, the number was, was, the way I understood it was not supposed to change, whatever they submitted, such like Jimbo said, the numbers is out there at the last meeting. The way I understood, the scope of work was just gonna be presented, but the bridge will be that we presented, we didn't vote, we didn't take a vote on them the other day. But the numbers, they were red and the figures were red openly. Then, then the scope of work came into question, so the contractor agreed to do that on the numbers that was presented the other day.
I mean, you don't have to, I'm not, I'm just, I'm just asking you guys the question, so that when you take your vote, you will delineate that and make sure it's specified of what the numbers are that you're voting on.
Well, see, when we, when we heard the numbers here a few minutes ago, we didn't have the, the numbers the other day in front of us to compare, to see, I thought they was all the same numbers, personally. But, but Jake said you change the numbers, and your, some of your bids, I.
So that's the reason I contacted my attorney right after the last meeting. And what, actually two of them, one being a former county attorney and another been attorney-in-law since. They both said that if the scope of work changes, then it causes it to change.
The way we all ordered is to go ahead.
She said it changes all numbers, and then she said there's no change order in it, so that nothing would go up. So under the impression of the new scope, which, I mean, if you kind of think about what they said with the second six here, they want an average of the number of amount of material that's gonna take to fix it, and then everybody bids on the same thing. Because even currently, if you take, there's six of us here, right, or there were six of us last week. There were all six numbers, we're on all six different projects, if you think about it. We had six different job bids for every job. Every one of us thought we'd do something different. And like Brandon said, that's not a level playing field, because somebody called, go pipe it out, and push dirt over it and kind of done, and the next guy come in and build a concrete cross. I mean, it's apples and oranges, you can't, like she said, you can't compare the two. So when they come up with a new scope of work, your cost has to change. Because if any of them, none of them change their scope of work, then they all pretty much have the same idea what they's gonna do at every spot. Making no suggestions.
The way we understood it was, was to break it down to see if we had enough material and stuff in it to meet the number that we had, not to change our number.
The change in the numbers was just to tell the quote, that's what Matthew told me, and he said, you have to change this, we'll do it different, and that's what he said.
I mean, because as of now, we've exposed our numbers and it allowed you to double your.
I mean, I go back to my same numbers, doing the way I want to them, I don't care. So I can't get pissed with the meeting.
The board, you weren't at it. They said, if you look and you need another load of gravel, you write at the bottom of your bid sheet how much more gravel you need, and that's what your bid was. That's what they said at the meeting, and that's what everybody did. But you weren't at that meeting.
Since you're an engineer, why don't you go out and survey all these sites and make.
I did, they paid me some money.
Well, tell them to hurry. Pretty simple. I thought, I could hire them to survey all the bids, pay them.
Remember when we bid them, we went and looked at them, and we knew what we had to do and what it was going to cost to do it. Because you bid it off by that sheet, and you bid it blind.
I didn't bid all of them blind. I mean, I looked at a couple of them, and I looked at a few of them that just, I mean, it's several states. I mean, the biggest difference is.
Because I'll take it from, I said, handle contract, they could do all twenty-five of them in forty-five days.
Are you willing to do it for the first set of numbers, Jake, Jake?
Huh?
Are you gonna do the job, the first number you present?
If that's what I mean to do, I mean, it don't, I, I was still making money, of course. I mean, I didn't bid it to lose money. At the first one, I bid it to bid money, I mean, they want to.
You took their numbers, so you say you're not gonna change your numbers, then reasonable bid.
Well, the, the scope of work changed, so you have to change your numbers. I lived the meeting thinking that, well, the scope of work's gonna change, Matthew called me, and he said, I need your scope of work, that you've done on all these things. I said, I'm at work, I said, I don't have time to send them to you, I said, I have to go back home and get them. I said, just put them down on my list, and they were gonna take an average, and then they were gonna rebid that scope of work. That, then the bids will be accepted today. They chose not to change your numbers, because, I mean, I know conversation took place today. Somebody said, I, I never changed my numbers at all, I'm bidding the exact same thing, I ain't changed nothing.
Why is it all of us understood it one way, and you're the only one who understood it another?
Maybe because I'm deaf and stupid, Jim, but I mean, it is what it is, that's what I understood, and I took it from Matthew's same way.
Can I ask, can I ask a question? I, I think there's a lot going on about. So normally, their procurement policy says they'll load by, by lowest bid, correct? If that's how they're gonna vote, is to load by, to award by lowest bid, that means several of you got several of these projects, correct? There is a forty-five day turnaround, um, if we divide these up evenly, there's only a couple of them that could go either way. So if I was advising this court, I would say, let's look at, A, lowest bid first, and then let's look at the time constraint that we have to do it, because I don't know any contractor that can do twenty-five and forty-five days, and then be done sufficiently, um, and then just divide them up, everybody gets a piece of pie. Is that acceptable for everyone?
Oh, yeah, I mean, that would give it up to give me, if you got a bid on them.
Yes, no? I mean, as of right now, everybody gets a piece of this pie. I feel like we're having an argument over lowest bid, or this or that, and this is going nowhere, so we've got to come to some resolution. But if it's going to work by lowest bid, that's clear.
Are you all satisfied with the numbers that you heard us at?
We're all on board with what Melinda said.
And the numbers that, that presents today, that was raised up.
I'm a cheap Jake, man. One of them wasn't read at all, so I'm missing two out of my.
Are you, are you all right with your number today?
Okay. My question to you is, did you submit those bids today?
Yes.
You reached the meeting?
I don't know where they are, because we did not pull them out of your folder, and you physically watched me lay.
They were in the.
They were in the.
The folder that we handed to the judge.
The two, the two, you, 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 you covered me on.
The only two extra ones that would've been in there would've been the projects.
Well, you had a blank sheet there that one was, but.
Right, that was.
And that was ten twenty-two and thirty-eight, correct?
No.
Twelve fifty-four, one zero zero one, and thirty-eight.
So we all play packages.
Wait, wait, just, let's wait and see about these other two bids that didn't get read. So Craig, is that the only one, are you the only one to turn a bid in that didn't get read? Maybe you didn't make a copy, reckon?
Maybe.
Well, have you got, have you got a, have you got a copy that?
I've got a copy of the document.
So it's two different?
Well, it's, uh, last year, last year.
Did anybody else bid on that project that you're talking about?
Uh, project thirty-eight wasn't read off at all.
Hey, you had a, you had a couple that you put a file together and said nobody bid on, that one of the files?
Correct, I had thirty-eight, which there wasn't a bid for, and then ten twenty-two, which there wasn't a bid for. So I moved those folders because they were submitted today, to be rebid.
When we do their.
Yes. And then twelve fifty-one, it's not in here.
They was wanting, they was wanting, they was wanting with duplication, I don't know, Craig.
This is your original bid that we just pulled.
Well, it's a same copy. I didn't submit a copy with it last time.
Did you, did you have the scope of work added to this?
Yes, he emailed it to Matt, he emailed it to Matt, that's correct.
Well, you're, if you've got, if you've got it on your phone, want you to email, email to Matt to print out, was Matt the one who was gonna print them out?
Yeah, I did, I sent it to Matt.
See if you got the one on there too. Now, I do know when they're Craig and say that they were two of the same bid, but maybe they weren't even saying gone. Which project is this? Is that one of them that didn't get read? We're here.
Project twelve fifty-one.
His original bid on twelve fifty-one was twenty-four thousand five.
He, he got it here, what he sent Matt to print it off, but if that, if that same bid, then that's why.
It's the exact same number. My number's changed.
And he's got one of them, he said Matt.
The eight, the eight.
That on project, uh.
Twelve fifty-one. I got it all on there.
Yeah, twelve fifty-one.
And then you've got.
Everybody listen up just for a second here. I looked at his phone and he did email these to Matt to print off, and I don't know if Matt printed them off in a separate pile, because they did have two different envelopes. But, uh, is it okay to go ahead and read these off and, and add to the, add to the one that was read, read today? Is everybody in agreement for that? I mean, because he did send it to Matt.
Okay, procedurally, you've got a motion to second on the floor, are you gonna, you all gonna hold that in balance to vote on until these are read?
Well, we have to.
We, I mean, the motion to.
But you haven't published it.
Right away.
So you just need to let this information be heard, and then go from there.
And then the motion, and then take a vote.
Right.
You just gonna let that motion die, that we started doing the original motion?
The motion's to take the lowest bids, so whatever they are, they just need to be in the bid sheet, and if the bid's the lowest, then it's tough.
Let's just go ahead and, let's clarify, what we're bidding on today is what we read today then, right? Everybody, you okay with that? And then we go ahead and add these four additional ones, I don't know if it's change the bidder or not, but I really do think, you know, I know, I know he sent a copy to beat print now, they just must've overlooked it and then.
Like a twelve fifty-one, is that, is that one of the jobs on that issue out there?
Uh, ten oh one, thirty-eight, uh, ten twelve, and twelve fifty-one.
Ten twelve read, and twelve fifty-one read. Right, I mean, without them.
Craig?
No.
No, what, ten, we got ten twelve, job twelve fifty-one.
Okay, you want me to go ahead and read these off before we go ahead and take a vote and bid?
Yeah.
Uh, project twelve fifty-one, uh, twenty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifteen cents.
Judge, you read those off?
I made great.
Craig? In the next, oh, yeah, all these are Craig, these are the four that he had, they never read off. Uh, project number ten twelve is twenty-four thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty cents. That was read today?
Yes.
Y'all should already have that written down, they said.
Yeah, we got that.
Okay, the next one is job thirty-eight. And it is twenty-three thousand seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Craig.
The next one is job number one zero zero one, and amount of twenty-four thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventeen cents. And we go ahead and let them put these into bid packets. Okay, uh, I don't, I still don't know that we need to change the motion, but I think we need to clarify a little bit better.
I thought they was giving everybody bids, like some to each, no?
Well, the way, the way it is, the way it is, uh, that's what it's gonna be. Everybody's got some of the jobs, if you go by the lowest bid that's read today.
It's your needs probably in the minutes, take those low bids and document exactly where they were.
So I think we still go along with the, the original bid, and let's say the bid that we're ready to hear today, we're gonna award the lowest bidder the project, and if they refuse it, or don't do it, then whoever's second in line will get it and, uh.
So everybody's.
And we wait for me to defend, but FEMA will look and say, hey, that's fine, we'll get the job, we'll give it to them. Everybody agree with that, your contractor?
Everybody's getting word.
Okay. So, Donnie, you made the motion and the yellow second, and us want to just go ahead and start with the re-bank, since we amended, amended the original motion. Donnie made the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Donnie Bush?
Uh.
Roy Elphie?
Uh.
Ellis Tanger?
Uh.
Now, now, some motion carries. Thank you, we get these done.
Do you want me to redo the bid goes to?
Uh, yeah, if, uh, she's gonna go ahead and just kinda look and read the project of who got what today. So, do you all wanna go, can you tell right now?
Yeah.
Okay. So, y'all listen up and she'll give you the job, uh, the ID number and then hook up the bid on it.
Okay. Project thirty-one, lowest bid was Combs, Middle Fork was second. Project thirty-eight, Craigan was the only bid. Project one oh five, Pit Viper was the only bid.
Was that one oh five?
One oh five.
One zero five?
One zero five.
I can't hear, I'm sorry.
Okay. Two seventy-eight was Middle Fork. Four twenty-nine, the lowest bid was Pit Viper and Archie Cayman second. Four sixty-two, um, that would be Middle Fork first and Combs second. Four ninety-four, Archie Cayman first and Middle Fork Cayman second. Five seventeen, Middle Fork Cayman first and Combs Cayman second. Five seventy-nine, Combs, I'm sorry, seven fifty-nine, my bad. Combs Cayman first and Middle Fork Cayman second. Eight fifty-three, Craigan was the only bid. One thousand and one, Pit Viper Cayman first and Craigan Cayman second. Ten twelve, Pit Viper Cayman first and Craigan Cayman second. Ten twenty-eight, uh, Pit Viper Cayman first and Middle Fork Cayman second. Ten thirty-six, uh, Combs Cayman first and Middle Fork Cayman second. Ten forty-five, Middle Fork was the only bid. Ten forty-eight, Archie Cayman first and Middle Fork Cayman second. Ten seventy, Pit Viper Cayman first, Combs Cayman second, and Middle Fork Cayman third. Ten seventy-nine, Middle Fork was the only bid. Ten eighty-two, Middle Fork, I'm sorry. Is that it for me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Combs Cayman first and Middle Fork Cayman second. Ten eighty-four, Middle Fork Cayman first and Combs Cayman second. Ten ninety-two, Middle Fork Cayman first and Combs Cayman second. Eleven thirty-two, Combs Cayman first and Middle Fork Cayman second. Eleven seventy-five, Pit Viper Cayman first and Archie Cayman second. Twelve fifty-one, uh, Pit Viper Cayman first and Craigan Cayman second. Any questions?
Okay, we go ahead and submit to FEMA and they'll be the one who... I don't think you can yet.
Why?
Play on the bid.
It was on the agenda. He bid them out for them to be opened today. I mean, he did that.
I didn't play on the bid though.
Okay, well, then they'll have to hold them next, next week.
There's a regular, we're not gonna edit it, okay?
Okay.
Okay, and has every, uh, has everybody else got a copy of the next work, uh, scope of works that will be done? Six project, huh?
Yeah, I don't.
Okay. I guess it was advertised to be open today, but we're, I didn't play it on agenda. We cannot add to it. And it hadn't been run into paper. So, if y'all are interested in low, uh, bidding on these other six new projects, be sure and come over and get a bid packet and... Uh, I think we've got a meeting, the tenth, I think Matt said we would have to have.
They might have mine.
All right, so...
We'll, we'll do it within the twenty-one days. They're gonna have to re-advertise it. So, if y'all are interested in the next six projects that's been released, uh, get a bid packet on them too.
Can we clarify this?
Yeah.
Okay. Here we go. Everybody listen up, contractors. All right, so the next six projects that he's put out to bid, we are asking for quotes on them. We will take the quotes, come up with a competitive bid for you to read, for that to be selected, just like we did. It will be the same forty-five days. Once they are awarded, just know the first set that you're submitting that's gonna be opened in next meeting is a quote. Once the quotes are averaged out, then we will request your final bid. Does that make sense to everyone in this room?
I don't know. I can't hear. I'm kinda...
I'm not asking for, I'm not asking for prices on those. We're asking you to submit a scope of work. We're gonna take the scope of work quotes, average them out. Then the next meeting, we will select, we will ask for the bid and we will select the bid. Make sense?
Everybody go ahead.
Clear as mud?
Can I get my bag?
They're not open, so I don't see a problem with that.
You got the job bid there. I'll take it.
The only one I've got a packet on and I, I mean, I didn't look at them, but this is the Middle Fork contractor, so we sure get you if that's the scope of work and...
I'll take it if you wanna worth any prices there. Got the whole price and everything.
Now, we'll, we'll do it to you.
Just need a scope of work.
Okay. Next item, consideration approval of adopting game rail plane into the county road plans. Have a motion.
Motion. Second.
Will you help me?
Uh.
It's a tender?
Uh.
Donnie Bush?
Uh.
We have some motion carries. The next one, Matthew Ran Austin. You have a question?
And do we get any, do we get any property under, do we get any dates from where?
Yeah, yeah, you've got that. This is bid turned in.
Who was it?
Uh, Kurt Gaylord. Downed eighteen twelve two oh five split.
If I had it, I don't have it right there, so I'll make a deal.
Well, we, we, we don't, I know we, he brought the, we, we done the first, we done the...
I just sent over. I'll make a deal pretty soon.
Yeah. Okay. Well, that happened in place anyway and to submit to Frank. The next one on the agenda, Matt had to run off and, uh, he didn't print the first reading of the budget amendment, so we'll go ahead and scratch that and add to the next, uh, next, uh, bid, next, uh, meeting. So, motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
It was tender?
Uh.
Donnie Bush?
Uh.
Whoever. Motion carries.